Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manasha Common Council meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have roll call, please?
Alderman Benner.
Here.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Here.
Alderman Crowe Kramer.
Here.
Alderman Olszewski.
Here.
Alderman Keahan.
Here.
Alderman Zalinski.
Here.
Alderman Spencer.
The first item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing. It's a special use permit by Creative Sign Company on behalf of Skolken's Festival Foods for a business center sign located at, was it 1405?
1435.
1435 Oneida Street. Director Kyle, could you give us a little insight first?
Okay. Our zoning code does not permit off-premise signage in the typical commercial C1 zoning district, or there is provision for what's called business center signs that are allowable by special use permit that does allow for off-premise signage in a business campus-type setting. And what we have here is the business center sign that's proposed for Oneida Street frontage that will also enable the placement of business identification signage for those other properties on the rear, or that would be on the portion of the properties that are abutting province tariffs.
At this point, if there's anyone from the public who wishes to comment on the special use permit, we would ask you to step up to the podium and state your name and address. Seeing no one, we'll call the special, the public hearing to a close, and we'll move on to public hearing. Get this eventually. Public comments on any matter of concern to the city. This is the public's opportunity to speak on any item that they would wish to hear from us this evening, and you'd like to step up to the microphone and state your name and address. You could do so at this time.
Go ahead. I can do it next.
My name is Tim Lenth. Becky Mader. We're owners of the building at 204 Main Street in Manasha, and we also live at 537 Broad Street, Manasha. And we're here to speak on behalf of the corridor and the downtown improvements. We're definitely for those improvements, and I read through this article briefly as far as what they're possibly looking to eliminate to make budget. And I think that everything that's written there, 1, 2, and 3, would probably benefit just due to the fact that it does get us within the budget for the city to make this improvement possible. And the walkway is obviously very important for our business just because it does go right through as well as the businesses across the street to make it safer for pedestrians to walk from the parking ramp to their offices.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Kathy Stahl. I live at 44 DePere Street. I just wanted to mention, as we get to the public works section of the meeting, if we could get some clarification on the Broad Street parking lot reconfiguration. I know that they included an area for an enclosed dumpster, and I'm not quite sure exactly where that is planned, if I could get clarification on that when that topic comes up.
Sure. Thank you. Anyone else that wishes to speak this evening? Seeing no one, we'll move on to the report of department heads, staff, and consultants. Deputy Fire Chief Voss is here this evening to talk about the 2015 activities of the fire department.
I was told I have 10 minutes, so I'm going to do my best. I have 10 slides, 10 minutes, no questions. We'll move on.
Okay, I'll time you.
Right? So, I handed out a couple of handouts over by the door as well. The PowerPoint presentation is kind of just me gleaning off some of the highlights of that handout that you have. It's our annual, our 2015 kind of summary of what we do at the fires department in case, you know, people don't realize that we do more than put out fires and run with the ambulance. So, we, I'm just gonna, like I said, I'll fly through this. If there are questions, I'll do my best. So, let's see if I can operate the computer. So, our department overview, just as a reminder to everybody, we are a full-time department. There's always staff there, 24/7. We operate out of four stations. We work with three shifts, and most people see a definition of a shift like first shift, second shift, third shift. Our shifts are more like battalions of groups of people. So, today, there's a group of people there. They're there for 24 hours. Tomorrow, there's another group. We refer to them as shifts. They sometimes, that gets a little bit confusing, but so I wanted to just clarify that. What are we prepared to respond to? We respond to everything. If they don't know who else to send, they send the fire department. This is a list of common things, but the sky's the limit. We'll go, and we'll figure it out, or we'll find somebody else to figure it out so we don't have to stay there. But the bottom line is, our department does many, many things, just like any fire department does. One of the things that we often, you hear a conversation about is response time. What's response time? How do we respond compared to other departments? Everything in the top part of that slide in blue is part of response time that we have nothing, no say over. This is the 911 call, and the dispatcher answering that call, and gathering information and entering it into the CAD system, which then guides them into which department to send. It doesn't get till the bottom two bullets there where you start seeing in red where we really have any control over our response time. And about the only thing of those two that we can control is how fast we get dressed because we can't drive the fire trucks much faster than we normally do. We can't magically get somewhere where we're not. So, those are the two things that we kind of have some control over, and even that, it's a little bit hard for us to control, you know, our travel time. That's dictated by where our stations are, or where our apparatus are at the time of the call. So, if you see us moving apparatus around, often it's to keep our response time in check. So, if one engine has to go from a station to another station to train, we often will move another engine to kind of spread out so that our response times are not, you know, damaged by calls that come in when we're out of place out of a necessity. The public doesn't really care about any of this. They care about that when they called 911, somebody answered the phone, and within 30 seconds, the fire truck was there. We do our best. 30 seconds is kind of a stretch, but they want, they just want us there to help. So, here's our average response times. Now, if you remember, on one of the next slides, you'll see that call processing time is about the first minute of every call. So, if you shave the bottom columns off of that, that's our first minute that we don't have any say over. Overall, this is, just giving you an idea, this is all calls on this graph, all trucks, all incident types, but they're all emergency calls. I purposely did not include non-emergency calls because it really doesn't, response time isn't really part of that equation. This includes both cities. This also includes all of our mutual aid calls. So, as an average, you can see that we're doing, we're doing pretty well. So, if you want to break it down by each vehicle, and where each vehicle is normally stationed, you can see that the vehicles that we have, their average response times for emergency calls are pretty close to the four-minute national standard that they want us to hit 90% of the time would be the national standard if we were going for that. We're pretty close already if you look at the fact that this includes all responses. This includes the ladder truck, or the Quint and Command that are stationed in Nina, but also have a response area that takes them all the way to the north side of Manash or to the east side of Manash. So, that's why their times tend to be a little bit higher. They cover both cities on many different calls. Engine 31 from Breezewood Avenue doesn't typically, Breezewood Lane, sorry, doesn't typically go to calls in Manash, so that kind of changes the times for Command 32 and Quint 32. And then you can be proud that Engine 35 has the best response time. That's the station at, right here in Manash, downtown Manash. So, they do a good job of getting on the truck and getting to the call. So, I gave you a second handout. It's separate from the packet because this was a little bit hard to read. This is where I really wanted to make a comparison with our department and everybody that's right around us. So, I threw the City of Oshkosh in there, and I threw the City of Appleton in, and then I took the Town of Harrison, which is a paid-on-call department, Town of Manash, which is a combination paid-on-call and part-staffed, and I think I put the Town of Nina in there as well as they touched the City of Nina on two sides. So, if you look, we're the bottom line there, and that's where we want to be on this graph because the end of the line represents our overall response time. So, you can see the chart below is the actual numbers. I added that after I did my notes. So, you can see that Nina, Manash is on an emergency call, on a structure fire, which is what the standard is wrote for. We're doing very well. We don't quite meet the standard. That's that second arrow up on the right-hand side, but we're pretty close. So, I'm very happy with this chart, and this isn't meant to pick on anybody else. This is meant to highlight our department and how well we cover getting a 911 call and responding to the scene. Okay? This graph, just for note, I pulled this data directly out of the CAD system at the county or at Foxcom, and I ran the same exact parameters for our department as I did for everybody else. So, if they're, if one is wrong, they're all wrong. So, the graph is correct, in my opinion. That's the way I look at it. But this, this took quite a bit to gather this information and do the calculations on it, but I, I'm very confident that it's a good representative, good representation of how we fall in the area. So, this is our run data, kind of condensed into a chart. It's again, kind of hard to read. I should mention that all of the data in the PowerPoint, I said it earlier, but it's in the packet for you to take home and really dive into, and if this isn't enough for you. I'll point out that we ran 2,442 calls last year. You can see that a number of them were structure fires. We kind of had a big year for structure fires for some reason. If you look at how it trends across the five-year, we see everything kind of going up. We, the statement on the right, the minimum, the property loss, we just started using a new calculator, a new calculation that Assistant Chief Green came up with. We started applying it last year to all of our structure fires. So, this is a new number for us. I don't have a five-year comparison on what our saving, or what we've saved. As the years go by, we'll continue to run that same calculation and estimator. I'd point out advanced skills, about a third of the way down. Advanced skills are skills that as first responders, we've, our department has taken on to go above and beyond what a first responder would normally do. And some advanced skills that we do, we're allowed to use a glucometer, take blood sugars. We're allowed to use a pulse oximetry. It allows us to check for carbon monoxide in the blood. That's an advanced skill. We just recently got approval to use field tourniquets. A couple of things that are on the horizon for us for advanced skills are the application of Narcan and our possibly placing advanced airways. So, you can see our advanced skill numbers keep climbing. It's because we just started doing them a couple of years ago, and we continue to do more and more of them. How am I doing on time there?
I didn't actually time you.
Oh, okay. So, automatic aid, for those that aren't aware, we have an automatic aid agreement, not because we think Appleton Fire Department's a better fire department and they should be serving the citizens of Manash, but we do it because we wanted to address that response time issue again, and we had some areas where Appleton could cover us better, and then they had areas where we could cover them better. So, when you talk about mutual aid or automatic aid, you can't get much closer numbers than that. So, if you ever wondered about, geez, are we getting a fair shake on this deal, or are we going to Appleton more often than they're coming here? It's almost even. So, and that's pretty been, pretty much the trend. So, I was happy with that slide. Often people, I hear people say, how come we're always going to Appleton? And I can say, because they're always coming here. Overlapping incidents are an interesting thing. We have four stations, and it's not uncommon for one rig to be on a call and other calls to come in simultaneously. This graph shows how that lays out over the year. Obviously, as the total number of calls go up, the chance that you're going to have an overlapping call goes up with it. So, as our call volume goes up, we expect overlapping calls. So, you know, the need for firefighter, staff firefighter, staffed engines, all of that, we can get into that later, but it's not like we have one call at a time. They're coming at us all the time. I'm sure the PD understands this as well. I can't even imagine what overlapping calls look like for them. So, when we're not doing all them calls, we do do quite a bit of training at the fire department. And this last year, we saw the two big blue lines there are dive rescue training, and the other one is our driver operator, certified driver operator course that we ran within the department. Very time-consuming, quite a few people participate in it, so that skews the graph to show the man-hours are extremely big in those areas. We did spend a lot of time, but the more, the more normal numbers would be representative of the, you know, the first two or three column, the first two or three bars there. That would be normally what you'd see. This last year, we had a huge focus on dive rescue with a lot of people and driver operator with a lot of people. I'm sorry, aerial operator. Occupancy inspections, I couldn't get out of here without talking about preventing fires. You can see that these numbers continue to grow, except for, you know, we would hope that the number of inspections that we do grows is that represents that our cities are growing, and the number of violations that we correct, we would hope would decrease because that means that we're fixing things. If we're constantly correcting violations, that means we're not teaching the business owners how to meet the fire code. So, these numbers are, again, showing a four-year scale or four-year representation. 2% dues, as mentioned above. Each city gets a pretty good chunk of money back from the insurance companies through the 2% dues program. 2% dues eligibility is based off of number of inspections completed and training hours completed. Those are the two major criteria for making you eligible to receive that money. I'm very proud of our public education group and our team, the efforts that we do. I wish I could compare this with other cities around us because I have a feeling that we'd be off the charts with our numbers. We, you can see the numbers up there, and we're hitting 6,000 people nearly every year with, at least last year. And that's not just showing them the fire truck and letting them try on our fire helmet. Every time we have a contact with a group or a tour that comes to the fire station, we take five minutes and run them through a short program about fire safety, or smoke detectors, or stop, drop, and roll. These numbers are big to us. I have a feeling, I wish I could figure out how to prove it, that our education numbers help keep our fire numbers down. I don't know how to, if anybody else knows how to figure that out, I'd love to be able to make that comparison. Just a little trivia, we had no days last year where we didn't have at least one call, and the last time we went a day without one call, with zero calls, was back in 2012 on September 16th. So, we're, there's always at least one call, pretty much. And that's, that's my 10 minutes. This is, we put this together, Tara and I worked on this quite a bit. A lot of hours went into, not the slide program, but what you have in front of you, and I hope it just kind of gives you a glimpse of what we've done. Keep doing it.
Does anyone have questions for Deputy Chief Voss?
If you digest that document and you have questions, call me or stop in. I'd gladly go through any of it with you or explain any of it, so.
Great. Thank you for coming this evening and sharing that with us.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We also have a presentation by City Attorney Captain on an update of the real estate purchase and sale agreement at 460 Anup Street. For these, oh.
I just wanted to go through the provisions that are contained in the proposed real estate purchase and sale agreement for the R.R. Donnelly Building. And what I handed out to you is just the PowerPoint that we'll be going over. I wanted to put something together that was as succinct as possible. You did receive in your packet the, a memo that I prepared, and you also received a copy of the actual proposed agreement. Would you perhaps noticed, if you read through it, it's not quite finished. There are some additional things that we're working on. It's not substantive. Anything that we're working on is not substantive. Just for the sake of letting everyone know what we're talking about here, the R.R. Donnelly Building, this is an aerial view. Main Street, here we are. Main Street comes down here. There's the bridge, so we cross the bridge, and this is the R.R. Donnelly property right here. I believe that it consists of five, there's five separate parcels to the R.R. Donnelly property.
Two across the street.
Okay. Two that are across the street on this side, and then the rest are on this side. And these are just a couple additional views here. There is a canal that is right along the property here. So, for preliminary matters, just wanted to, for those council members who were not on the council in 2014 or 15, in August of 2014, the Common Council approved a resolution which declared property to be blighted, authorized the redevelopment authority to acquire and assist with the redevelopment of the property. So, this has been in the works for a number of years. Do you recall when they left? The business is no longer operating at that location. So, approximately 2012 that it has been vacant. One of the memos, I recall seeing that Community Development Director Kyle prepared, and I can't remember if this was in 14 or 15, but he did go through, if you want to go back through some of the records, he had a memo that indicated how far the property value from 2008 to 2013, it had declined nearly 65%. It had been at 1.7449 million to 619,500. So, that property was declared blighted in 2014. Then in 2015, this was in July, the Common Council authorized staff to prepare a land purchase agreement, what we had at that time, and there is also a memo to the effect of identifying what the terms, the substantive terms of the transaction, what they would include. So, if you want to go back and look, you will see that the substantive terms are there. And we also had asked for authority to expend some funds. We were hopeful that we would have been able to perform the environmental assessment, but as we'll continue to discuss this, and you probably have read in the proposed purchase agreement, that's not exactly what R.R. Donnelly had in mind. So, you will be seeing that 32,500 coming up in a little bit before the Common Council because there will be a request to carry forward those funds for the purpose of some of these expenditures that will be coming up. So, as far as the agreement terms are concerned, the, you know, purchase price is nominal, the general things, title insurance commitment and survey, actually at the last RDA meeting that we had, what was written into the purchase agreement was that the city was going to make these purchases of the title insurance commitment and survey. And since that meeting, which was just a week or so ago, we had some further negotiations and discussions with the seller and seller's attorney, and they are actually going to purchase the title insurance commitment and survey. And then if there's no closing, they'll be responsible for those costs. If there is a closing, then the RDA would be paying for that at closing. That's not the way they had, you know, for the last couple of years. That's not the way it was, that they were negotiating with us. On both of these occasions, when they provide the commitment and the survey, when they turn them over to us, there are very short deadlines, so we will have to review these documents in a very quick fashion and then provide seller with notice if any of the exceptions, or if there's anything wrong with the survey and the seller, will have a right to cure or to insure over the exceptions. And if they choose not to cure, well, then they would be providing us, you know, notice of that, and then we would have an opportunity to terminate the contract, or else we would just be waiving those commitments or those exceptions. There are two inspections that are part of this transaction. One of the inspections is what I will call the RDA inspection. The other one is the seller's inspection. The first inspection, RDA has an ability to, and this is defined, conduct a physical inspection. You'll notice a bunch of language in there, so I'm just kind of cutting it short here when I put it up on a slide. This would be a physical inspection. It does not include anything that will come out in the environmental review, and that has a specific definition as well. The environmental review would be done by the seller. So, the RDA inspection would include everything else that's not in that environmental review inspection. Again, a short period of time, 45 days of actually signing the agreement. If it's unacceptable, if anything is unacceptable throughout that physical inspection, and I believe that we've already had discussion about what, some of the things that we would be looking for, and that would be stuff like asbestos or PCBs around the windows, flooring, lead paint, you know, stuff like that. So, we would be providing notice then to the seller. Again, the seller has reserved a right to cure. That means that they reserve a right to, if they want to, to, you know, take on that work themselves. Otherwise, if they choose not to, then they would be providing us notice, and we either at that point decide we want to continue on, or we don't want to continue on with the purchase, and we would have the option to terminate the agreement. There's some language in the agreement where the RDA would indemnify and hold the seller harmless for many damages that are caused by the inspection, you know, that, there's some insurance requirements that are really tough in my mind. We've been trying to... We've been trying to get them to relax on those, but they, you know, they have a little bit, but not all that much. The risk, you know, we're just going to be walking through the building with contractors and having them look at things and taking little samples for lead paint, et cetera. So, you know, there isn't a huge risk in my mind in that regard. The other inspection then is the seller inspection. The seller will complete an environmental review. This is according to a specific standard, ASTM standard E1523-13. Do you want to speak on that?
EPA is, and this is part of their super fund rules, they have what's referred to as an all-appropriate inquiry inspection, and it ties back to this ASTM standard. And if the property is inspected according to this standard, and it comes up that there's really no findings, that there's no findings of potential contamination, then the city can go through a process whereby it can garner a liability exemption for anything that might have been present but was undiscovered as a result of the survey work.
So that is why that particular standard was selected. You'll recall that in the buyer's inspection, that was a physical inspection, it does not include environmental review. So that would mean anything that has to do with this particular standard. Some of the things that I spoke about, like the lead paint, et cetera, that is not included in that standard. So that's why we would have the ability, and we would be looking for that in our inspection. What the environmental review will include is a Phase 1. I think people are relatively familiar with what a Phase 1 environmental review is. If the consultant then recommends a Phase 2 based on what comes out of the Phase 1, then a Phase 2 would be performed, and that is testing usually. The seller will have an option, retains an option, whether or not the seller is going to release that environmental review. If the seller releases the environmental review, then the RDA pays costs up to 30,000. And this, you may recall, was what we did discuss back in 2015. That is part of the 32,500 that we had talked about at that time. That is one of the things that was included in that. What we were trying to do, we were working with R.R. Donnelly to see if we could do these tests, but this is the way that their council wants to perform the examination or the environmental review, and it's their building. So if the seller does not release the environmental review, then the seller is responsible for the full costs of that Phase 1, Phase 2, and, you know, then there's no transaction. The transaction would be basically dead unless, I don't know, we have further discussions. Along with that environmental review report may come a proposal for remediation. So this would be, once the Phase 1 is done, the Phase 2, if the report is released and there is a recommendation for remediation of anything that's identified as contamination, we would be getting a proposal for that. That's the time we'll know whether or not, you know, what, if anything, is there. The proposal for remediation that will be provided to us will include an estimated cost. We as well will have an opportunity, if it's released to us, to seek our own opinion with regard to the cost of remediation. And that, again, is an opportunity if the RDA doesn't like what, you know, what it sees, the RDA will have the option of terminating the agreement. If, once we receive the remediation plan, if we decide that we want to move forward on the closing, the remediation must be completed in accordance with the proposal recommendations. Again, if we do not like the recommendations, we already had the opportunity to terminate the agreement. Or perhaps, if appropriate, you know, we would probably terminate and then work on some other resolution if we thought it was plausible. However, if we do move to closing, the RDA again would be responsible for completing that remediation in accordance with the proposal recommendations, would agree to indemnify and hold the seller harmless for many claims arising out of the remediation. In the case that there is something that does not show up in a Phase 1, Phase 2, this was, you know, we obviously had long discussions about this, you hope that everything is going to show up. But if there is, in some case, some unknown contamination that does not show up during that environmental review, the RDA would indemnify and hold the seller harmless up to 250,000. So the object there was to try to limit any amount of liability in the case of any third-party claims that may come later. And this would be something, obviously, that would not have, something that R.R. Donnelly would not have done. It would be, you know, something long before them that no one perhaps would know about. As far as project investment estimates, a lot of this you have already seen, 30,000 towards the environmental review, title work and survey, 10,000 to 15,000. I don't believe that we discussed that, but that, you know, would be something typical. The purchaser would, you know, oftentimes would like to have a survey of what it is that you're purchasing to see if there's any issues with what you're acquiring. The physical inspection appraisal, perhaps 5,000 was the number we estimated. This was in a memo, the demolition and potential asbestos removal. Environmental remediation, obviously, we do not have an estimate because we don't know what that is yet. We were hoping to have something, but that is not the way that R.R. Donnelly wishes to proceed in this transaction. We discussed as staff that we would be looking into potential insurance coverage for any environmental unknowns. There are insurance companies that, well, you can have anything insured that you want to. It just makes matters how much you want to pay for it and what you want. You just tell them what you want covered. And at this point, we obviously don't know what it is that we would want covered. We don't have the Phase 1, Phase 2, so we would have to wait until all of those things come in, but we would be checking into the possibility of insurance coverage and, you know, letting everyone know what that is. And the way that this, I have closing costs of about 2,000. The way that they've structured the closing, they want an escrow agent, and so there's going to be a cost to that. It would be split between the two of us. And of course, we're into a new year. This is a taxable property, so there would be a proration of property taxes. So just wanted to, with this last slide, show you the opportunities that even entering, when entering into this agreement, the opportunities that the RDA will have to terminate the agreement. If there are unacceptable title insurance exceptions that the seller does not cure, there will be a right to terminate the agreement. If there are unacceptable survey encroachments that are discovered and which the seller does not cure, there's an opportunity to terminate the agreement. If the RDA's physical inspection of the property is unacceptable and the seller does not cure, and the RDA does not wish to, you know, continue with the acquisition, there is a right to terminate the agreement. And lastly, if the environmental review and remediation recommendations are unacceptable, the RDA has a right to terminate the agreement. There are no standards in there. So that means this is, you know, if we don't like any of those things, we have the ability to terminate. So there's not a standard. Generally, I like standards, but when you're negotiating with another party, it's just the way it is. So as far as the next steps, this, I wanted you to see what the agreement is looking like. Again, these are terms that, the substantive terms have already been discussed back in Final approval of the acquisition would be necessary by the common council. That in turn would lead to execution of the agreement or signing of the agreement by the RDA. The RDA then would be administering the contract. I told you about all those things that would be coming in with regard to the title commitment, the survey, the RDA inspection, the environmental review, and possible remediation plan. So it wouldn't be until spring, summer probably. Correct? Is what I estimated. Obviously, some of those things would be coming sooner because some of them need to be done within 30 days, 45 days, you know, from the date of the signing of the agreement. And the common council to authorize borrowing then if the property is acquired and, you know, we are moving forward with the acquisition, the remediation. And that also was something that was contained in a memo in 2015, by the way. It also is in the the capital improvement plan. It's been in the capital improvement plan 2015 and '16 as a spot holder. So I don't know if anyone has any questions. I can try to answer them. I did just provide a sample resolution.
Alderman Taylor.
Have we physically gone through the building at this time?
There is a provision for physically going through the building and an inspection, as I just mentioned, once an agreement is signed.
So nobody's gone through the building yet?
No, I've been through the building these twice since we've started our discussions with R.R. The building is essentially a shell. All of the equipment has been moved, basically just open floor space.
Okay. And the thought is that we're going to demolish the whole building?
Well, that decision would be made in the future. I think there, and there's a couple of other pieces to this that aren't necessarily between R.R. Donnelly and the city. However, if you recall, I believe four of the five options for the reconstruction of the, or the replacement of the Racine Street Bridge involve the Donnelly structure, the office building primarily, and also some of what would be that single-floor manufacturing space. So somehow or other, that would come into play in the future, and it would, that would be kind of dependent upon what timeline the RDA and the city wishes to follow. If the plan is to clear the site immediately, then that would not be as impactful as say we would wait for a few years and then DOT would go about their real estate acquisition. Assuming that the RDA owned it at that time, they would be negotiating with the RDA for the acquisition, and then they would also presumably be doing whatever demolition of the structures would be necessary to facilitate the bridge construction.
Without disclosing, is there any interest in this property at this time?
Any interest by developer? There's been other parties interested in purchasing the site, but to use it more or less as is. There's not been any approach to the city by a developer to say, hey, you know, if you acquire this, you know, we're ready to build something on it.
I believe when we took this other action that was up on the screen before, I had asked that, I had, I read the Milwaukee Sentinel daily, and I see a lot of these, the western end of this building, I think, is four or five stories tall. And I had asked you if we could possibly talk to a developer in Milwaukee, see if they'd come up and look at this. Did we do anything like that?
It's not owned by
Yeah, we don't control the property, so
Well, I mean, just, the question was back then to have someone come up, take a look at the, I know other people have gone through it, the basic structure of it.
We wouldn't be inviting another entity onto someone else's property.
Okay. But I mean, you look at it from the outside and you could see what pretty much you have there. I mean, they see the pictures in the Milwaukee Sentinel Weekly on these old factories and office buildings that are
Yeah, the building on the west end is three stories, and that too is just all open space at this time. So
I was talking the west end. The east end, I understand the bridge might impact that or whatever. But that west end was four or five stories.
And as this moves forward, you know, there could be different acts taken. One may be that the RDA would solicit proposals for redevelopment of the property, and those proposals could be looking at it either from a completely cleared site or also offer the possibility of doing some reuse of, you know, portions of the current structure.
I mean, we've seen firsthand in Appleton, the paper mills and the flats that Alexander Company came in and did a fantastic job. This also has the, a water canal for boats or to dock at a housing facility or something, or loft apartments.
Right, and the bridge, that will impact that as well because of clearance that would be necessary for those boats. And as I recall, I believe we will be seeing a little more elevation over that canal.
I talked to the DOT about that too at that time, see if we can get more bridge clearance out of that at that point or not. And I think my boat is 12 feet tall. I can get under the Racine Street Bridge there. It's the second bridge that is the obstacle.
That would be going away.
That would go away, and then the access point would be down the
We've had that conversation with DOT about replacing that, and that would be something that would be looked at in the plans.
Outside council fees, $30,000, what would that be for, that we couldn't do in-house
That's the estimated cost for someone who is better versed in environmental matters. And that actually has already gone through the RDA, and there is somebody who we have been consulting with.
But you said we weren't inside the property yet?
I guess I'm not quite sure what the question is.
We were not inside the property in any official capacity relating to the acquisition. I was in there one time with the real estate broker when they had it listed. I was through there more recently when there were a couple of individuals who were looking at purchasing it for more or less a warehousing type of use, but those were the purposes of my visit.
So then why, if we're not in there physically besides that, what is the outside service doing for us right now?
The outside council?
Yeah.
They are advising us on how to take this property in a manner that minimizes the risk of the city and the RDA as we move forward.
Okay. And have they been through the property and looked at--
No, and the attorneys wouldn't be going through there. The attorney is advising us with respect to this purchase document. And that purchase document contains the provisions for the environmental review as well as the physical inspection of the property.
Okay. And does anybody know the current tax that we're receiving with just this bare building?
Well, you can figure, it's valued at $619,500.
Hey Greg, does this include the peninsula that goes underneath the Racine Street Bridge?
Yes, it includes, it includes the--
Parking lots.
What I'll call the factory building part of the site. It includes the parcel that's north of that, which contains the peninsula. So the only thing in that corridor that it doesn't include is the canal itself. That canal is owned by Sunoco. And then it also includes the parcels that are across the street, the parking lot, and then that little piece that's where the Dory Island site is.
So Sunoco owns that power canal?
Yep.
Okay. And so you think there will be another bridge reconstructed to the west? So if someone wanted to build there or something and utilize those parking lots or a build site on the north side of that power canal?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. And the DOT would have to pick that up?
That's what we're--
That's the $64,000 question.
Well, I mean, the A will do their real estate work, and then they have to provide compensation, fair compensation for the property. So if, you know, if you lose access to that island, that's part of the compensation and would need to be addressed.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Zalinski.
Thank you. I'm Gregor, the Health Department. You mentioned lead about 10 times. How do we hold the city not liable for lead poisoning? It's close to a school and close to a residential area, and if we take ownership of this, how do we protect ourselves?
The lead isn't really a threat from that perspective. It's more of a concern for the disposal of the demolition waste. The demolition, if the demolition waste contains lead, then it has to be handled differently than clean fill.
Well, I just heard it mentioned so many times, and there was a lot of scares nationally about lead. Being next to a school, are we doing testing in the residence when we're tearing down some of these buildings? I don't know if they did any when they were tearing down the Gilbert site, but--
No, there were, the asbestos is more of an issue in terms of, you know, making sure that that's properly contained as part of the demolition process. But the lead, to my knowledge, is not something that's an environmental threat to remote properties.
Well, that's what everybody says. What kind of liability do we need to protect ourselves from that?
Well, the contractors that do the work need to be licensed, and they would have insurance.
Yeah, they will have insurance up to a certain limit, then the city steps in because we'll be owner of that building. We give them the green light.
There's, yeah, you're posing issues that really no one can answer. There's, I'm not sure what liability--
Well, I don't know. Well, if some of these houses, this is in the middle of residential area, some of these houses or the school gets contaminated, who ultimately pays? The contractor or us? Everybody says it's not going to happen, but I'm sure they're dusting the school every day while they're tearing these buildings down, because I'm sure a lot of those residents have problems with dust when you're tearing Gilberts down, because I saw it blowing all over the neighborhood. Am I opening up something that I shouldn't even be opening up?
But generally, contractors have training for abatement of like asbestos and lead. So that's what you'd be looking for, somebody who has that certification.
And, okay, well, we'll wait and see.
There's a particular procedure for demolition, particularly if there are contaminants. And so it would behoove us to select a contractor who is following the correct procedure and ensuring that they are, that they have proper insurance, and we have staff that oversees asbestos removal. Just like any other buildings that come down in the city of Manasha, there's a process and a procedure in place and licensed contractors and a way to remove it and places that these things get deposited in specific kinds of landfills that can only take that, you know, that can take that kind of stuff.
Well, I'm just worried about the dust. I noticed when they tore it down the Manasha Hotel, it was just blowing right down the main street, and there was no, they weren't hosing it or anything. It scared me.
And that was not the city that--
Yes, it wasn't.
--did it?
Correct, it wasn't the city. Do we hold, are we held to a higher standard than an independent person that buys the building?
Everyone's held to the same standard, and if it's not done in a proper fashion, then it's the state that steps in. And in some cases, there's criminal prosecutions that can occur if you do not follow the procedures.
Okay, well, that's what I want to be watching, because it's going to be a dusty operation when they start tearing that down.
And you are not allowed to take down buildings that contain asbestos and have all the friable material floating throughout the, throughout the air. There is a requirement that there, it be watered at the same time that you're demolishing it.
And, okay, off of that subject--
If that's even the case.
Is this kind of on the fast track for the bridge?
It's on it, well--
If I can just ask, what are you referring to when you say on a fast track?
Well, we're talking about who's going to own it, and then who's going to tear it down? Are we going to buy it and then wait until the bridge is decided? Or the minute we buy it, are we going to be talking about demolition? I hate to see if we're going to buy this thing and then it's going to sit, and then we're going to wait for the bridge to be decided. Why don't we just have the DOT decide?
That would be a decision that would have to be made as to whether or not you wanted to do it right away, or if you wanted to wait, and perhaps with the selection of the type of bridge, because obviously it's, I believe that it, four out of five, so the city does not select what bridge is going up. It's the DOT. So depending on what selection is made, then if you wanted to wait until that occurs, there may be some reimbursement. That would be sort of an extra, I guess, I would say, and the, wasn't anticipated, it would be something that would be extra.
Well, I wouldn't mind that, but usually we don't get the extras if we find out it takes more to tear this down than the $550,000. Then we're coming back to the council and asking them for, hey, we need another $400,000. That's the part that I'm questioning, $550,000, and someone's cheap to tear down that building.
At this time, there is no secure estimate from a contractor as to how much it's going to cost. That would be something that would be determined when the city does its, or the RDA, when it does its inspection. And then at that time, if it is, you know, costs too much, it's not appropriate, that would be an opportunity to terminate the agreement.
And I would probably, if, well, I won't be here, some kind of closed session, what the proposal for this building is, because that's what most of the neighborhood is concerned about. What are the proposals for this building? Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Just a question. Building was, is for sale, was for sale, but we couldn't go through the building with the developer and ask him to look at it because we didn't own the building.
There isn't a developer, and we are not marketing the property.
I can't hear you, Greg.
We don't own the property. We are not the developer. We don't know a developer. And so I think it's premature for us to be involved in marketing something that we don't control.
Oh, I think the suggestion was back then, if they're doing all these creative construction jobs just south of us here, and I not have, the suggestion was to invite one or two or three of those big contractors up here and take a look at it and see if there was some interest in it. And if the building's for sale, there's no reason we couldn't take someone through the building.
And what purpose would that serve if we can't control the outcome of it?
Well, it was just to see if there was a possibility of them looking at this to see, I mean, if I'm looking at a property and I can bring a contractor in there with me to look at the property and say, you know, what do you think about this? Is this something you're interested in or not? I just, I just see it done so much down south of us here with these type of properties.
I don't disagree with what you're proposing. I just think that now is not the correct time to do it. I think the time to do it is when we actually have control of the property, and we can then formulate the direction that it goes. Otherwise, it's kind of meaningless.
Yeah, I disagree with that, but that's just my opinion. I think now's the opportunity to take one of these big city developers through it and see if it can be converted into these loft apartments that are doing these high-end apartments. Just my thought.
And we should comment on that a little bit, Greg, because we did have, was it Leon from the navigation, when the Navigation Authority came up? He did go through that building and did talk about marketing it to people, and we have not heard back from him since. So we did, we did go through it with someone. I think Greg is correct. Normally, what you would do is put on RFP once you control the property and ask for proposals on redeveloping that property. Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First question, did we have budgetary numbers for the demolition at all, or is that just based off of our experience?
The number that is at $450,000 and $100,000 for the asbestos, those numbers were garnered by Donnelly. I did talk with both the company that prepared that, both the estimate for the demolition as well as for the asbestos. The asbestos estimate was prepared without inspecting the roof. Donnelly didn't want the roof to be compromised at that time, so if that was not inspected and that would be part of our inspection as we move forward.
Okay. And just to comment on the abatement process, there really isn't a concern with it, because qualified contractors, what they do is they tent off the area that they're doing the abatement on. They have extensive filtering systems for the dust. And when, nobody's allowed in that area except the qualified persons, and when that abatement process is done, then they open it back up for the rest of the demolition to continue. Second question I had was on our outside council fees. And we have $30,000 at 50 to 55 hours. At 55 hours, that's $545 an hour. Is that accurate for those types of services?
It is.
It is, okay. Just seems like a good number, if you're on the receiving side of it. So those are the questions and comments I have. Thank you.
Alderman Zalinski.
Thank you. Peggy, how the dollars, the total amount that they showed up there, where are they all coming from, and how many are set aside already for this project?
There are no dollars set aside as of right now. It would, it was identified in the CIP as a placeholder only for the past two years. So to the best of my knowledge, it would be a borrow on the part of the city. That would be the responsibility of the tax levy until such a time that tip was created or increment was generated, or there were other funds to take that over. And as far as the amount, I added up the amounts, but because that environmental remediation is a to-be-determined, I'm not exactly sure you could decide how much the total cost is going to be. It looks like, you know, without the insurance coverage or the max of $250,000, you're looking at about $642. With that, you're at $892, but it's plus remediation.
Yeah, I'm never sold on when the seller comes up with the amount that the remediation would be. That's always trying to sell the property. That's what, I've been through enough properties where they come up with an estimated cost, and it's always low, because they want you to buy the property and deal with it later.
Alderman Taylor?
Who has to maintain the shoreline, the north and south side of the power canal? I know you're saying they own the canal, do they own property either side of the canal? Do they own up to the bank, or what is that description of the property?
I don't know how that shoreline exactly relates to Sunoco's ownership. I believe they do own the shore wall there, but I can't, I can't verify that right now. They acquired that interest in the property, I believe, from the Nina Manasha Water Pool Company, which had Lawson Canal as well as segments of the US government. And I know in the case of the US government--
Okay. There's an opportunity, excuse me, there's an opportunity you're going through this project. I would certainly like to go on behalf of the city, too.
Alderman Zalinski.
Thank you. Since we had a resolution that we blighted this property, I don't think I voted for that. How long does this blight designation hang on this building?
The blight determination does not terminate. It's listed as blight. We have blighted virtually all of the downtown over the past 25 years. Hopefully, we get improvements as a result of going through the blight process and redeveloping.
So with blight determination, how does that affect the, if we decided to do nothing and other purchaser?
I don't know that the blight determination would affect it as much as, you know, since the property has not been used for more than a year, that we would have our zoning compliance issues that would be effective. And then at some point down the road, we would need to make a determination as to whether, you know, we ought to cause the building to be razed just to eliminate, you know, what's going to become an eyesore as it continues to deteriorate.
Well, that was my, that was one of my problems, why I couldn't blight it when we have so many other properties that should probably be coming down ahead of this. But if we keep that designation on there and we never take it away, we still have zoning issues now that I didn't hear about before. So it would be really hard for somebody to come in there and just start renovating, to turn it into housing or--
They would need to go through a process, yes.
And the discussions with RR Donnelly, how much is the ongoing cost of this building other than the taxes? I'm sure we got to keep, they got to keep this fire sprinkler system and insured.
Yeah, it's tens of thousands. I don't have an exact number.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions for the attorney or the community development director, we'll move on to the minutes and, I guess, just the minutes this time. Do we have a motion? Alderman Taylor?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to receive and approve minutes E through I.
Is there a second? There's a motion to receive minutes A through I. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
Item G is the consent agenda. There are seven items this evening. The minutes to approve from the common council from February 1st, the Board of Public Works recommendations from February 1st. First, the recommendation to award the 2016 Water Main reconstruction projects. Two, Donald Hipson Sons for $921,465. And the recommendation to award the 2016 Water Main reconstruction project for the Third Street Brighton Drive area to advance construction for $99,185. The Plan Commission recommendation from February 2nd for the special use permit for the Business Center sign at 1435 Oneida Street, with the findings that the sign will serve multiple tenants on a common development site, and that the tenants on the sign will be limited to those located on parcels number 700052-14, 15, and 17. The recommendation is based on the condition that parcel 7005215 will not have any additional freestanding sign on the Oneida Street frontage. And the property, the recommendation to acquire the property of the Petri and Convenience Store Investment, Inc. parcels for Province Terrace Trail Extension. The redevelopment authority recommendation from February 8th for the Lake Park Villa's second restated covenants. And the Park and Recreation Board recommendation from February 9th for the revisions to the Park and Rec Program services and fees for 2016. Does anyone wish to have any of the items separated this evening? Alderman Zalinski?
Item 1 and 5.
Okay, anyone else? Alderman Taylor?
Seven.
Any others? Do we have a motion for the remaining items? Alderman Taylor?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. I didn't quite hear for the, I'll just say the remaining items, which ones did Alderman Zalinski?
So it's items 2, 3, 4, and 6.
I'll make a motion to approve items 2, 3, 4, and 6.
There's a motion, a second, the items that were removed were the common council minutes, the property acquisition, and the revisions to the Park and Recreation Program fees. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 7-8-0.
Is there a motion to approve the common council minutes from February 1st? Alderman Zalinski?
I'll make a motion to approve the common council minutes from 2-1-16.
Is there a second? Motion and a second, discussion?
Discussion, yes. Back in, this is a short history thing here, October 19th, we had a motion to reconsider for a parking lot. There was a motion made, a second, and there was a lot of discussion. Then winding fast forward to this, what changed in the Roberts Rule of Orders, that we had an ordinance again for a reconsideration? We were told there could only be a first, there didn't need to be a second, and there was no discussion. My question for our city attorney captain, what changed in the Roberts Rules of Order that something changed that we could have discussion on one item and not discussion on another, for the same purpose of reconsidering? This would be item 2-6, R-2-16, the resolution to write off general uncollectible accounts. Under the draft minutes?
So J1?
Last council meeting?
Under J1. Did you have a comment on that, Attorney Captain?
It's in an ordinance.
Well, they were both in an ordinance.
I'm looking at the council minutes of February 1, 2016.
And I'm looking back at October 19th, that was an ordinance, that was R-35-15. And we debated it, made a motion, we seconded it. And this one didn't be debated? It didn't even need a second?
There is an ordinance that indicates the motion to reconsider does not require a second.
Can it be debated? Or clarified, why was reconsidering it?
I'd have to look at it, I didn't bring it this meeting. But I don't think it says that in the minutes, it doesn't say that in the minutes.
Well, it doesn't say a lot of things in the minutes, but I remember you saying that it does not need a second, and we cannot talk about it.
I'm not the, I don't make the decision, so I'm not quite sure what you're talking about.
Well, you shut us down, because Alderman Taylor brought it forward, and I wanted to discuss it. And you told him there was no discussion, we just voted.
On a motion to reconsider?
Yes.
It doesn't need a second, I know that, I'd have to look at the ordinance again.
Well, that was the minor part, I wanted to discuss it so before we had that vote.
Point of order.
So the other aldermen would have a clear.
Attorney Captain, what's the point of order?
Point of order is this is approval of the minutes. So whatever happened at the meeting, whatever is in the minutes, is the minutes.
So I can't ask for a clarification of your decision?
I would agree with the attorney that we're talking about the minutes here. If you want to hold off on approving the minutes, we could do that till the next meeting, you could discuss that with her at a further date, but it really doesn't change the minutes.
Point of order, again, if there's a correction to the minutes, that's what should be discussed at the minutes here, is any corrections that are made to the minutes? Not actually what happened at the meeting? If there's something that wants.
Even if it was wrong?
Point of order, I believe that I have the floor.
You do.
Thank you. If there is an item that wishes to be discussed relative to ordinances and motions to reconsider, it should be an item on the agenda, and then that could be something that is brought up.
I would agree with the attorney, like I said, if you would like to, you don't need to approve the minutes tonight if you don't want to, but you could discuss this with her outside of a meeting, or you could put it on the next agenda.
Put it on the next agenda, then, I want clarification on what changed.
Sure. We can, we can talk about what, we can put something on the agenda.
If we can't change the minutes or discuss any minutes, I have a problem with that.
You can change the minutes if you wish, you just make a motion to amend the minutes at this time. Alderman Taylor?
I do disagree with those point of orders, and as always up here, when somebody else makes point of orders, it's always taken up at a different perspective, if you will. There was a
We're discussing the minutes.
The reconsideration of this, Mayor, was because there were some new discoveries, and that's why this was supposed to be brought back in a reconsideration. And yes, Alderman Zalinski is correct, the attorney told us there was no debate. I have it in front of me, the Roberts Rules of Order, there's a second, there's a debate, there's no amending it, and it's a two-thirds vote. And we were told in our instructions here, there was no debate in the last time. And that's incorrect.
We're discussing the minutes at this point, if you.
That's right, and we're discussing how we got to that point, too. We'll bring it back, and we'll talk about it.
Is there a further discussion on approving the minutes at this point? Seeing none? All those in favor? Opposed? A motion carries. Item 5 is the property acquisition. And what you're doing on this item is just accepting the fact that the Plan Commission is recommending the property acquisition, we don't have an offer to purchase to bring before you tonight. So if there's a motion regarding that? Alderman Benner, sorry?
Mr. Mayor, at this time, I make a motion to approve item 5 on the consent agenda for property acquisition of the Petri and Convenience Store Investments for parcels for Providence Terrace Trail Extension.
There's a motion and a second, is there further discussion? Alderman Zalinski?
So if we vote yes on this, and we don't even know the amount at some point, is it going to be thrown back in our face that we approved it?
This is just accepting the fact that the Plan Commission approved it, we'll bring back a offer to purchase at some point.
I just don't like these things, we want to throw it back in our face that you guys approved that acquisition, but then the dollar amount comes in, you go against it, and then we have a long debate.
There's, I don't, I don't think there's a dollar amount yet, is there a dollar amount? Yes, there was.
Yes, there's, it was six, I think it was 6.2 acres at 3,500 an acre.
Is this buildable property?
No.
Wow, for a trail. I think we should be looking for a different location for this trail.
We did look at several alternatives.
Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Greg, just for clarification, the purchase we were making was for the Petri property, and then the Convenience Store Investments from QuickTrip was presently, it looks like they would be donating additional properties for this, correct? Right, so then.
Greg, I don't think anyone can hear you.
Those are the only two parcels that are not city property, current city property.
Correct, so there is huge benefit to doing this when it does come around, and that Petri property, that was, how many acres was that?
I think it was 6.2.
That's what I thought, yeah. So in the big scheme of things, to make that all come together with the Convenience Store donations, it's actually a pretty favorable purchase, in my opinion, so, thank you.
Alderman Zalinski?
Thank you. Greg, what other options did we have for trail location?
Well, the option that is currently proposed is, was selected because it provides the most direct route from Province Terrace down to 114. Because we're going through almost entirely wetland, the trail needs to be constructed on a boardwalk. And as you start diverting the direction of the trail, you start multiplying your costs very substantially because of the cost of the boardwalk. So there were other options that were considered, moving the trail out along Oneida Street would be an option. However, we've got that whole water channel there, the line ditches, culverts, and that would all need to be put in culvert at a huge expense. So that was not viable. Shifting the trail further to the east to say align with Arnold Drive, well, there's issues with that as well, because again, we're lengthening the length of the trail, and then Arnold Drive, I believe is also a private street. So, I mean, there's really very limited options how to get from point A to point B.
Was there any discussion of bringing up Oneida on the, probably the west side?
There was discussion of that, there's very limited right-of-way there. That, so we would then be into property acquisition, plus because you have all those driveways along the west side of Oneida Street, you're introducing a lot of conflict points for people that are on their bikes or walking, and vehicles backing out of their driveway.
Did anybody explore what that cost would be?
And, well, and then Mark reminded me that it's also Town of Minasha right-of-way.
That's never shovelled. Sidewalks are poor repair, so maybe we should act, maybe there should be an acquisition of this piece of property, because we're not enforcing, I don't know what parts are and what parts aren't, I brought it forward, and then I found out it was part of Town of Minasha. They just own the sidewalk?
I'll defer to Mark on that.
They own that portion, that portion of the highway right-of-way is in the Town of Minasha, even though the properties abouting it are in the city of Minasha.
Did anybody talk to them about trail, Town of Minasha?
Not to my knowledge.
I think maybe we should. That's just my opinion.
Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick math, we're actually getting about almost $64,000 of the property here for $21,000. And it's going to help, I think, our conservancy effort a little bit also, too, so if this all works out the way we're anticipating, I still think this is a pretty good value, and we still got our trail in where we need it, thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 7-1.
Do we have a motion for item 7, the revisions to the Park and Recreation Program Service Fees for 2016? Alderman Taylor?
I had some questions with this, and it was sent back to the Park and Rec Board, and just for discussion, I would like to have Director Tungate update us on if there was any talk, decisions, if you conferred with the police chief on this, or any?
Well, the focus on the, of the February 9th Park Board agenda, we went back and looked at the six fees that were sent to the council at the last meeting. Most of our discussion was about the pool rental fee, and specifically whether or not the fee that's being proposed covers our staff costs. We went back, talked to the pool manager, and did a little homework on that end of things, and found out that, yes, we are indeed covering our costs very adequately, the $155 an hour. We did get into the July 5th incident a little bit, and staff-wise, we talked about it internally, we also talked about it to the Park Board. I'm satisfied with the, I guess, what we're going to be doing going forward. I think it was a learning lesson to us to a certain extent. It was a very atypical sort of park rental, or pool rental, and we made some, I guess, changes internally, that those, we do not believe that an issue like that's going to happen again. And no, we don't feel like we needed to include the police department. If something gets out of hand, our pool manager is instructed to get on the phone immediately and call the police. So that was, that's something that was also reiterated.
What about people bringing in their outside sound systems that you can hear way out into the Lake Winnipeg?
Well, I mean, that. This is about the park rental fees, though, this isn't about park usage. If you wanted to discuss ways that we're using the park, that should be a park board discussion. That's not something that we would be taking action on here.
It was part of the rental fee to make sure that we can adequately handle the situation that was out of hand. And I think it's just a fair question that we have everybody here just to get an answer.
But that, that isn't part of the fees, Alderman Taylor, we're talking about the fees this evening.
Do we have the fees? So you're saying the fees are? You feel you have enough staff there to handle it, and what's going to change with that staffing that you didn't have last summer?
Well, actually, we had adequate staff, I think, and we, we're covering our fees with the rental cost to the group.
Then how did all the alcohol get in there, and all the glass containers, and how did all that happen if you had adequate staff?
Mr. Taylor, this is not on topic. We're talking about fees, and we really should have a motion to either approve or deny the fees at this point.
I don't think they adequately handled the situation, maybe we didn't have enough fees there and enough staff, and that's what I'm asking, to see if we have the proper staffing for the safety of the community, that's all I'm looking at, Mayor, is the safety of the community.
Director Tungate has told you, I think, three times, that he believes that we have adequate staffing. If you want to change the policies, then you should talk.
And then I asked him, I don't think the staffing was adequate, and I was just asking if there was, why it wasn't taking care of the problem that was there.
If you don't think the staffing was adequate, then you should go to the Park Board meeting and discuss with the Park Board the policy regarding the amount of staff. This is about the fee that we're charging the public if they wish to rent the pool.
And that's right, and I'm trying to see if we have the, why, if they had adequate staffing, which I don't think they did in this situation, and you weren't there to see it, and it was a very, very serious situation. And I just don't want the police department to have to come. And I just don't want the police department to have to come in and mop up after something. Brian said, "We don't have the right staff, we're not enforcing properly," and then we make the call, "Please, come on in, clean up our mess." That's what I'm trying to prevent.
Then you should be talking about...
To make sure that we have the proper staffing here, and if we're charging the proper amount of money for that, Mayor.
Mr. Taylor, did you go to the Park Board meeting to discuss this? When you sent it back?
No, I was at work, I couldn't make it.
Okay, well, you sent it back to the Park Board meeting to discuss these things.
Yes.
And that's where you should have brought these things up.
Well, there's, at times, we all can't make meetings, you know? I have a 40-hour-plus job out there, too, Mayor, that I just can't walk away from like you can. You know, and if you want to just badger this up like you want to do here, that's fine.
Mr. Taylor, let, let's move forward. We need a motion. If you don't agree that this...
And I don't think it was adequate, Mayor, and that's what I'm saying. The fee here is not adequate to cover what we have going on there for these private, for these private parties.
Then you should make a, a motion to amend it, to up that fee, if you think that we should have more staff there. You can do that this evening.
Well, that's fine, but I'm looking for some direction from the Park and Rec Director for that.
You could ask him what it would cost to add X number of staff, or whatever you would like, but first, we should have a motion to either approve or deny the fees, as is, and then we could move on to amending that fee, if you would like to do that.
Director Tungate, do you think this fee should be increased?
Well, actually, it's, it's, I could say that it's more than covering our staff fees. We went back and looked at the manager's rate, and the number of lifeguards and attendance and so forth. You know, when you factor in some office time to take the reservation, and, you know, you roll in some, you know, social security benefits and so forth, you know, the $155 is very adequate. I wouldn't go any higher than that.
Well, I, I just think it wasn't, I saw one staff member there, and he was way over his head, and lots of public urination under multiple people...
Mr. Taylor, again...
Under water slide. To me, that's not adequate, people that take care of the situation. I don't think the staffing is adequate.
Mr. Taylor, we're not talking about a specific incident this evening. We're talking about a fee.
I'm talking about the rental of the pool, Mayor.
Exactly.
And that, that fee is not, the staffing level that I saw does not cover that.
Then you should make a motion to increase the staffing.
And I'm trying to find out from the director if there is enough there or not.
And he just said yes again.
And I, and I, and I'm debating him about that, that this is what I saw, and I don't think it's adequate staffing.
And either make a motion to increase by X number of staff, or X dollars, or we need to move on at this point.
Yeah, well, my number-one goal in this city is public safety, Mayor, and it all has something to do with this whole process here. And asking a few questions, I think there's some, a, a, a little broader swath here that we can take to get to the problem. And if this, we'll call you next year if this problem happens again. It was, it was a serious, serious situation.
Mr. Taylor, what is your proposal to change that, then? If you think that we need to change something? Alderman Benner, would you like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to ask, this has been going on so long, and we've been talking about something that I haven't heard a motion.
There is not a motion on the floor at this point.
This time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the revisions to the Park and Rec Program Service and Fees for 2016.
There's a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I talked to the Park Board Chairman about this, and he said that they did discuss staffing levels on this, and he said that their staffing levels, and Brian, maybe you can help out with this, is that the fees reflect full staffing levels for their pool rentals. Is that accurate?
Yes.
And so, under any normal situation or environment, full staffing levels should be able to handle any situation that they have. As with any situation, if you have to call the police, you have to call the police. And it sounds like the staff has addressed that. And so, I'm ready to move forward on, on this for the fees as represented on the memo. Thank you.
Alderman Zalinski?
Thank you. I'm on the Park Board. We had this discussion. I think they were caught off guard. I was shut down for the same reasons that Alderman Taylor was shut down tonight. It's about fees. Then we kept on discussing it. So they were caught off guard. I think they'll have safeguards in place, so this doesn't happen again. And I was asked a lot about the fees, and they said it's adequate, and we'll have to go from there.
Any further discussion? Seeing none? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 80.
We'd need a motion to reconsider, correct? You could make a motion to reconsider, though.
He could, yeah.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion to reconsider, and we can, we can revote that?
I'll make a motion to reconsider.
Is there a second? I'm sorry, I don't need a second. Could we have a roll call vote on reconsideration? And then we'll revote if it passes.
Reconsideration.
Of what we just voted on, yes.
Yeah.
Sure.
So a yes vote would mean that it would bring the question back before you? And then you would be voting on the initial question? If you vote no, then we just move on to the next item on the agenda?
So, so we have...
If there's a majority, is everybody ready? Are you okay?
Okay. So the motion to reconsider...
Motion, motion to reconsider carried on roll call 80.
Okay. So the original motion to approve the fees by Alderman Benner, and I forget...
Alderman Ocheski.
Ocheski is back on the floor. No further discussion? Okay, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 71.
Item I is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll for February 4th through 11th. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of 2/4/16 to 2/11/16 in the amount of $5,121,573.67.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 80.
Item 2 is a beverage, excuse me, beverage operators license applications for 2015 through 17. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the beverage operators license applications for the 2015 through 2017 licensing period as listed under approved in the police department's memo dated February 10th, 2016.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 80.
Item 3 is the Amendment Number 3 to the Third Street Bridge Replacement Design Engineering Third Party Agreement. Is there a second? Alderman Taylor?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion for the Amendment Number 3 to the Third Street Bridge Replacement Design Engineering Third Party Agreement.
Is there a second? Is a motion and a second? Is there discussion? Seeing none? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 80.
Item K is ordinances and resolutions. Item 1 is Resolution 4 regarding official depositories. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for approval of R-4-16, Resolution Regarding the Official Depositories of the City of Manasha.
Is there a second? Is a motion and a second? Is there discussion? Seeing none? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 80.
Item L is appointments. There are two appointments this evening. The first one is the reappointment of Kara Holman to the Board of Appeals. Do we have a motion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion for the reappointment of Kara Holman to the Manasha Board of Appeals from the term of 2/15/16 to 2/1/19.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Item 2 is the reappointment of Joyce Klunt to the Committee on Aging. Is there a motion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd make a motion to approve the reappointment of Joyce Klunt for the Manash, to the Manasha Committee on Aging for the term of 2/15/16 through 2/1/19.
Is a motion and a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Item N is public comments on any matter listed on the agenda. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak at this time? Seeing no one, do we have a motion to recess to committee?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to recess to committee.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are at recess.